Okay, you have the agenda in front of you. Is there any changes or additions?
It's changed.
Yeah, you got the one you wanted.
I must have.
It's like all copied on this side. You want to add this stuff?
No, there's two.
We got both, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, we have January thirteenth, four minutes. I'll move it to a previous.
I'll second. Aberley?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Grady? In front of you, I handed you a piece of paper that kind of looks like this with red circles around it. If you'd like a K-12 school account email, you can fill this out and we'll get you a school email. Maybe that might be better so you don't have to use your personal emails for school-related stuff. I'm not sure what's your thoughts, but I thought I'd bring this up to you if you'd like an email. If you fill this out, we can get you a K-12 account.
Thank you.
Okay, um, second, the calendars. In front of you, you have calendar A, B, and D. I know I sent you A, B, and C, but when we were looking at C, I found out there was some conflicts with baseball. And fifty-four percent of our teachers voted on calendar C, so I decided I'll make calendar D because they really liked that long break, um, long spring break. One conflict I have is just practice. Baseball starts March twenty-first, but they can practice during the day instead of waiting for school to get out. So, like I said, calendar D, fifty-four percent of the teachers voted on that one. Calendar E was twenty-eight percent, and calendar D was eighteen percent. I did check. A lot of schools around Surrey is starting that week of August sixteenth. I know it's early. I know that we do have a football game Friday, varsity game on Friday. And then that Monday, we have a junior high JV game here on the twenty-third. I hate starting early, but that's the reason why, I guess. It's, yeah.
So, I know I asked you questions about that. I'm not sure I understand the eligibility.
Yep, um, yep, the reason why I said eligibility because these students are playing football without being in school and getting grades. So they're, they'll be in, um, you know, practice, they won't be in school. And then four weeks when school starts, that's when we take eligibility. So that's another week prolonged that we'll take eligibility. So they could be playing out there with bad grades. So I figured if they started football, we should be in school getting grades.
Did any of the teachers who voted on the calendars, sorry, I tried to talk to you, but talking to the microphone, um, did they give any reasons as to why they selected the calendar year that they did?
See, yes, they, they just really liked the long week so they can go and plan something out. They said it was really tough to plan, um, for half a week and then half a day off. And then, you know, saying spreading them out so much, they would really like just a long week to do whatever they need to do. Go on vacation or plan time, but those, that was the reasons.
Okay.
Is this something we're voting on to approve? I, you know, I wish we wouldn't have started school that early for sure. It'd be nice to start a week later, but, um, other than that, if D is what they like, then.
I'm gonna say no, I really do like to start school a week later. But, I'm gonna vote for it. I really give them that half way, so.
Any other comments on it, or is someone making a motion?
It was just the three, right? A, B, and D?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
I'll, I'll make a vote, a motion to approve, uh, D, calendar school year.
I'll second that.
Aberley?
Yes.
Mines?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Oh, um, one other thing I had is that we did put seventy thousand dollars in the loan account at the bank. Just to put money in there so we're ready to make that payment in, when was it, June?
July.
And we had, we had enough money to do that. And just to be clear, that's the money that we borrowed from ourselves. Um, no, that's the money that we had borrowed from the bank or the bank.
That was reflected. Was that reflected enough, or was that?
I just wrote the check in February.
Oh, okay. So we wouldn't have seen that? Yeah, I don't remember seeing that.
Nope, you wouldn't have seen that, right?
Not that that amount wasn't a budget, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Anything else? Mr. Grady?
No, I'm good.
Anything you can miss answer?
Let me see.
You wanna skip, just, no? See, I'm the unlucky lady.
Meeting before her does.
We'll go to you first.
I'll go.
Maybe I should read my agenda.
I could rearrange it.
Twilight?
Yes.
Oh, I don't really have anything. Can pull that up in a couple of questions. I'm gonna let Mr. Grady answer.
Um, one question was if we hired a para.
Oh.
And yes, uh, we did hire a para. We had a, we had a student move in from out of state that required a full-time para, so we had to hire a new para. Um, so yes, we did.
Okay. Um, I, I was telling Twilight before the meeting, uh, it looks like, and it all depends on what we actually, you know, end up paying for as compared to budget and what we receive compared to budget. But as of like, right, as of the end of January, it is razor-thin margins on making cash at the end. So, I mean, I know if you look at it, but I just, I'd say a lot, we are razor-thin.
Yeah, unfortunately, um, sometimes we do have students move in that we are required to do that. So yeah, we were, there was, we had to, yeah.
Oh, absolutely. And I can't say not to, right?
Right, yep. And then we have a question about, um, a bill from Belly City State University. That was for Mrs. Reckie to take a class to continue teaching college classes. And that was a deal made with Mr. Boyle that she would take his classes and teach, um, college English.
Oh, okay.
And so we do have, and that was budgeted, um, and so we do have a couple more, I think, two more, two more than she's done.
So that's two more, like, not this year?
Two more semesters, I believe. So two more payments of that.
Right. In this, in this year's board?
Um.
No, I don't think there will be. There might be one more this school year, and then maybe one next.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, and so actually, I should have wrote, I should have read mine now. I wrote to myself. So, I, when I'm estimating, just based upon revenues, estimated revenues we received and, you know, budgeting expenses, we would have, and considering our cash we currently have, we would have forty thousand dollars to pay. But that includes getting eighty-five thousand dollars for certain food service to P K us for salaries and twenty-one thousand dollars in miscellaneous income. And I think right now we're only at like a thousand or two thousand in miscellaneous income. So that's a huge chunk of that forty thousand, you know?
Are you talking about, um, food service income coming in and stuff?
Yeah, it would budget it for us to be, yes, which is right, and I think that there will be.
Yep.
But we just have to keep in mind that we still have to make that transfer. We have to have enough cash to be able to make that transfer from food service.
Yes.
And that twenty thousand of miscellaneous income, I don't know if that's gonna, you know, since it's miscellaneous, I really don't know if we can get it.
Right, well, I do have, well, Twilight, I hear, I'll have a solid. We do the food service accounts balance. And I, we put the estimated revenue coming in, the expenses, and that's what, it'll be pretty close of what will happen at the end.
Which includes the transfer from?
So we have room to transfer money over to pay for food service.
Okay, perfect. That, that was, that was a fair amount.
Yep.
Do you know what went into that, this miscellaneous income piece of it?
No, but I haven't known until we get into that.
Okay.
I'm kind of curious to twenty thousand.
Yeah.
I have a note. I, I'll look into that and let you know.
Just whether or not we actually expect to get a charge somewhere in the culture.
Was there any other questions in the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
Aberley?
Yes.
Mines?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And Wall?
Yeah.
I did send out, um, two, uh, one open enrollment and one tuition agreement. The open enrollment is for a family that just moved into North Dakota. They live in the T G U district. And the tuition agreement is for two kids. They live in Surrey, but their mother works at mine a public school. So it's number eighty-two N.
So the first one would be eighty-two N, open enrollment?
I'll make a motion to approve number eighty-two N.
I'll second.
Aberley?
Yes.
Mines?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Yeah, number eighty-three.
Get number eighty-three out.
And then I'll make a motion to approve eighty-three out.
I'll second that. Aberley?
Yes.
Mines?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Help Miss Hanson.
All right. I have two resignations, actually retirements. Uh, Mrs. Chuan is retiring after twenty-three years, and Mr. Kruger is retiring after thirteen years.
Mrs. Chuan can't possibly be old enough to retire.
We just had that conversation today at lunch.
She could have started drawing, or drawing, she did a couple years ago.
She was in Berlin to break the law.
Yeah.
Were these for you?
No, they're just for anybody that wants to retire. I mean, you can keep them. I have a good.
I, I.
Oh, yeah, we got these in the emails.
Anybody else? Let's take, uh, Mr. Kruger's first. Uh, I want to thank him for his thirteen years for being here and being athletic director and coaching. He's done a lot for the school. I know that position's gonna be awful hard to fill. There's not a lot of people out there, so. But I want to thank him for his time and, uh, wish him well in his retirement, so. We do need a motion to accept his resignation.
A motion to accept his retirement resignation.
I'll second.
Aberley?
Yes.
Mines?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
The other is for Clean Chuan. I really question if she's old enough to retire, but, um, again, I want to thank her for all her years of service at school. Twenty-three years is a long time to be employed here, and she's done a super great job with, uh, Christmas programs and, and music programs, so, reluctantly, I guess I would entertain a motion to accept her resignation.
I mean, she did teach her older children too, right, Ron? That makes you that old?
Oh, Justin, you killed me.
I'll make a motion to approve the Ms. Chuan's retirement.
I'll second that. Aberley?
Yes.
Mines?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
So my question to, to you, will we start advertising for these positions right away then?
Yep, we'll post it.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
I don't have anything from the school visiting committee. Paul, do you have anything?
No.
Uh, we have a negotiation seminar on here. Several of us did sign up and, and take that. I thought it was really good. A lot of good information. Anybody else have any comments on it?
Probably said you got a little worried to, by actual mechanics and strategy and whatnot. We could have done without the lobbyists, but other than that, it's, it's a good seminar.
Twilight did print out handbooks from it, so.
I'm trying to get the PowerPoints from the, uh.
Well, they did, I, they were sent out to me. Did you get them down, Tyler?
Uh, yeah, I think the school was supposed to send out.
Yeah, they sent us.
Okay, okay. Usually they're on the website. They're not on there yet, so they may still, some people that are leaving can't get it.
Uh, with that, we'll move on to new business and masks.
That was mine. I just wanted to see what the plan is. We're at green now, um, so, you know, as per the plan laid out, we would be back to where we started. We're, you know, in hallways and lunchrooms, like we can't, you know, where they can't socially distance, we'd be at masks and not in the classrooms unless required by the teacher. So just wanted to see what the plan is for that.
Yep, um, as of right now, we're just trying to gather more information. We did allow the elementary students to not wear masks outside and, um, during gym class if they can socially distance. Now, there's some teams that they're right next to each other. Um, I do know that when the governor put everyone to green, we have three schools, our neighboring schools, that had to cancel quite a bit of games within the last couple of weeks, which really makes me nervous with our season coming to the end. So we're just trying to gather a little bit more information, some information for you. Um, so before Thanksgiving, we had a hundred and eighty-three close contact students that were out of school. After Thanksgiving, we've only had thirty-four close contacts that were out missing school. So I thought that, that made a huge difference. Um, so right now, it's a hot topic. Um, do you want anything to add?
I think that number evidently flows with the state as well, and so we saw that spike exactly at that same time. And now that that spike is down, my question is, what's the difference between our athletes playing sports in the same gymnasium and our students having to wear masks in that same gymnasium and they're not socially distanced? What's the difference?
That, that's a good point. You're right, they don't wear masks when they're playing. So.
And, and so when they are close contact, I mean, they, they weren't sick necessarily, but they might stay home. It was ever close contact where they stay home.
Yep.
They have that option for distance learning now, right? So.
Yep, we, um, I guess the, the students that had COVID pre-Thanksgiving, we had thirty-four. Um, after Thanksgiving, we've only had thirteen, so that number really went down. Um, I did survey the teachers. I wanted to know what they, they felt and what they're feeling on masks. We had around forty-five percent of them really wanting to keep the mask in school. And, um, about twenty-three, twenty-four percent said that just in the hallways and then, um, when they cancel social distance, so.
Where's the rest of them?
What's that? Well, there was three questions. Um, forty-five percent of them wanted to keep the same rules that we have. Um, twenty-three, twenty-four percent just in the hallways, and then twenty, twenty-three percent or so said just, um, when they cancel social distance.
Oh.
So.
Okay, so that's about half and half, huh?
Yep.
I guess the concern and frustration is we built this plan and said based on the colors of the state, and now we're kind of saying, knowing it's at our own discretion now versus what we initially had planned.
Right, we, we did change that though, Dustin. When we came back to the school board.
Right.
We changed that plan, so it may change this, it may change that depending on how we feel as a school. I, I would really like to get, and this is maybe about to say, I want, I would like our athletes to compete yet. Like our volleyball team, they didn't get voted districts. That was really, really tough on a lot of them. Senior year not being able to compete in their last tournament. Right now, girls' district starts tomorrow, boys' is a couple weeks, you know, I just, um, it's really hard to say.
And those things are a hundred percent important. However, we have to take the whole school population into account, just not the athletes. And, and so that's what we gotta look at, what is important for the whole school, not just.
Right, and that's why I surveyed the teachers, and they feel that wearing masks is safer for the teachers and the students. So you're, you're, you're right.
I'll, I'll throw in a little bit. You mentioned the distance learning, you know? The thing is, when these kids, and I, that would have been interesting too, to total up how many total days these kids are out. And, and bless the teachers' hearts, they have worked more than overtime with the distance learning, but it's not doing it. Our, these kids come back from being gone for a long time, and they missed a lot. That's just all there is to it. It's just not the same as being here. So besides sports stuff, we just want to keep them in school. That's, that's the, the staff and the students.
What would be the plan then for ever getting back? Like, will this be forever if they have to wear masks, or when, what? I don't know what the benchmark is then. What are we going for here?
No, that's a good question. Our goal is to try to get normal, back to normal as soon as possible. I just feel right now we're at a place that, you know, what if we can hold on for a couple more weeks and then we can start easing up on the restrictions here in school? Um, I just feel if we, I really don't want to go no mask right now just to get through our, our, our season right now. I really don't. Um, and then, like I said, we already said for elementary that no mask outside on recess, no mask, you know, like they can, um, socially distance during P E. I, what, what are your thoughts, I guess? We, we, our main goal is to keep our students in school.
And safe, with our teachers safe.
I don't think there's any course of action that we can take that's gonna mitigate the risk totally. And at some point, we have to just decide how we're either gonna continue with our life or not. So I think the safest course of action is to do what you're doing and wear masks and socially distance when we can. But, I mean, kids are shutting down the school, and as Hanson was saying, um, I know my kids struggle greatly with the online part. Uh, as did I, kind of, through that, but it was nosedive down. So, I like them being in school, and if y'all feel that they need to have masks, fantastic. If it needs to be for more weeks, it needs to be another month at the school year, that, that's fine. I don't think anybody has the answer right now as to, to what is appropriate. So the best we can do is, is look at the data we have and make our decision local.
I'm on those same lines, though. I also strongly feel that, and, and this is just what I feel in my opinion is, I see especially within the high school, we've got a lot of students who choose to distance learn because if they're at home at least, they don't have to wear a mask, they can use their cell phones, whatever. You know, these restrictions that we've placed within the school are only going to make these kids want to distance learn. If they're at home, they don't have to wear a mask. So you guys are concerned about that, but you gotta think about how many you're gonna. I know there's, there's quite a few in high school that are distance learning for that reason.
Uh, I'm just gonna jump in here for a second. So last week, I and Mr. Kruger were at the girls' district basketball meeting with all the schools. And I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not really talking about sports at this point, but the feeling of all the schools that were there in general, they voted on all the fans and people that are gonna be at the auditorium to wear masks. The thing that I got from their talking about the issue, that wearing masks was a, a big thing at the meeting. It took up a lot of time, and, and they really struggled with it. But in the end, especially the three schools that have lost games, their schools are wearing masks. Our, our neighbors to the east, um, for their tournaments, they're wearing masks. In fact, they're not even gonna hand out, in, their trophies to the teams. They're, they're, they're still really, uh, afraid of what might happen, so they're being really cautious. Not that I'm trying to relate it to sports, I'm just trying to give you the general feeling of the schools around us yet. Um, they, there was a couple of schools that really fought it to no avail 'cause everybody else was for masks. And to the east, they're actually more stringent than we are here, uh, just to kind of give you a few where they're coming from. And like I said, I'm not trying to relate it to sport, but, um, they're making everybody come to the tournaments wearing masks, fans. Uh, they have designated areas for everybody. So yeah, I, I'm with you. I think the thing might, might not, I don't have it on the mission. But, um, and I, I think that we'll get to that point. Everybody's just kind of afraid right now to pull the trigger and say, hey, you don't have to wear masks. But the general feeling of all the schools around that I got that were at the meeting, you know, they're still gonna wear them for now.
There are also some schools that haven't worn them since day one and have been functioning just fine, so. I, I really don't care either way. I honestly don't. I typically wear mine. I forgot mine in my vehicle, sorry. Um, I, me and my family, we're just gonna follow the rules. Whatever, whatever is decided is, is what we'll do. Um, I'm not for or against them. I'm, I'm just.
I just think we need to have a more firm date where we'll kind of look at it again, or like, a closer benchmark, or, or we're gonna really look at it to say like, hey, what is the function? And then make sure that we're, we're doing it for the, for the school as a whole. Because again, I go back to it, if we're making the kids wear them in gym class if they can't socially distance, but then we're boxing out and we're grabbing rebounds, and it is no different, none at all.
So the, the policy that the committee put together, does it address this, or is it something they need to get back and set some timelines, or?
The policy.
So it, what, the policy was when it goes to green, this is what it could do. And the last time they had it in, the school can make the decision that's best for the school at that time as well. So we are following the guideline correctly. I mean, it's, they're not doing anything wrong following that guideline. It just.
I don't think that necessarily it needs to be one size fits all approach, if this, then that. I mean, if, if we're gonna take measures that are more restrictive in favor of being safe, and that's what everybody feels is appropriate, then, then that's fine. So, no, there is no difference between gym class and the basketball game. Um, however, it's more safe than not to do it one way or another. And to put a date on it, or to put a, a specific drop-in, I, I, I think we need to be more agile on that.
Yeah, not a drop-in date. We're gonna look at it every two weeks, or we're going to whatever, look at the data.
Sure, yeah, and I, I think that's what Mr. Kruger's doing, is, is, he's doing that and trying to figure out. I mean, we get conflicting guidance from everybody. It's just now gone from a public health issue into the political realm, so that we've lost all sense of what is appropriate. Uh, so all I can do is rely on them to make the best decision for the school. You know, unless there's just something, just a total, where you just come down the pipeline, you just, you have to allow them to be agile and followed. And if we have to make a, a rule that is contrary in one aspect, would it, it's safer that way than, I think, just err on the side.
And then are high school kids wearing masks in gym then as well, or is it just elementary, whatever?
They've been kind of just judging it on what they're playing. I've been in some where they let them put them down, and then the next game they're playing like, what was it? They're playing down, then through the under, sliding under each other's tank, and they're wearing, because they're right up against each other. So it's kind of, you know, depending on what they're, they're.
Was it you who put masks on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so has your question been answered yet?
No, I don't think, I, I would want to, I want an answer about when, I think, and I don't know if I have an answer about when. I mean, wherever we could wear masks, it'd be safer, or we're gonna say. I mean, wherever we could wear masks to be safer, or we're gonna say at some point, like.
We're not gonna let it hold us hostage anymore.
Right. So I just, I wanna know what that, like, we're we're anymore, is it for a basketball tournament to be over, like at the high school level, so? Then that's the benchmark.
But then they want a baseball and then you have state baseball and.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then younger kids, sports started, so.
Yeah, the only thing with those sports are more outdoors than the basketball thing, but, um. We can sit here and talk for another hour about the masks and just out of Steph's point, but, um, I mean, my opinion right now is I'm okay with Mr. Girding and our COVID coordinator to kind of guide us through this. I'm with Nicole, yeah, at some point we need to be done with this. What date that is, I don't know, but there's nothing wrong talking about it and looking at it and and certainly by the next board meeting, hopefully we're done with it, but. Unless anybody objects, I'm fine with the two of them still working through this and kind of figuring it out. Because I mean, it it just happened, you know, what, ten days ago, wherever that changed, but, um. My best day at work was the day we got to throw a mask out, I can tell you that, so I, you know, I I understand and I've never cared for him in the first place, but. Unless anybody objects to that or do you wanna change course from that or?
I have no objection.
I just wanna make sure we're doing it for the right reason, right?
Oh, yeah.
I would like to revisit, you know, every week what's going on and talk to Mr. Hanson as the COVID coordinator. What's the best plan of action every week, you know? Hopefully in a few weeks that we can say, hey, it's just in the hallways.
Because they've also changed the the CDC guidelines as far as restrictions and close contacts and and those definitions as well, so we have to keep up to date with that and make sure that we're looking at it. You know, it's no longer fourteen days, it's ten days based on certain criteria. And some days, sometimes in some cases seven days, so making sure that we're up to date on that information and that we're not being held hostage to the to the old data, thinking that we're we're still gonna spike, we hit that spike in late October, early November, through the beginning of December. And looking at those state numbers, Ward County today at sixteen was the highest that it's been in about a week. And so it's been single digits mostly, so we just have to make sure we're making the right choice for everybody and that we're all staying safe, but being logical when we're making these decisions.
I do talk to the, um, I keep saying my new best friend at the health unit, we we talk almost weekly, either she emails me or we talk both. Yeah, those changes and, um, today she sent me some guidelines like the National Academy of Pediatrics, but they're still saying, you know, so we do get a lot of information. From them, yeah, they've been great.
Can I just piggyback off this masks thing and ask, are we meeting, I mean, are parents allowed in the school yet? Are they able to come in and meet with teachers or you guys? Cause I'm just, I'm just asking, cause we're talking about masks, we've got school board meetings open to the public, we've got, you know, the gym open to the public now for activities and games, but we're still not allowing parents to come in and meet with teachers and staff?
As of now, unless it's like a real emergency, we've been trying to do it by Zoom as much as we can, yeah.
Are you good with the board?
Yep.
I asked Twyla to get the super evaluation, superintendent evals. I think the next board meeting is March tenth, tenth, yeah. The deadline's fifteenth, so if I could get these probably like by March first from you guys and then I can. We can approve it at that board meeting then? March first.
December.
No, that, we'll.
Oh, okay.
But if I can from you guys, March first.
I just heard a couple of dates get tossed around, so I wanted to make sure I wrote down the right one.
And then I also put on here a negotiation team, um, to deal with contracts and such, um. At the last board meeting, we appointed myself and Daniel to represent the board. But, you know, in going through the seminar and stuff, I think it's important that we get established who's gonna be on the, um, negotiating team, so from my point of view, we definitely want Mr. Girding and Twyla on there. And then it's up to the teachers to come up with their representation, but I don't know if they've done that yet or not.
So I guess I understood that the the superintendent, the business manager were the resources for both sides. So they're not really part of our team, but they're just our resource for information.
But we need somebody there when when we need. You know, and that was what kind of threw me for, but you've got to record and publish minutes of the negotiations.
Uh, yeah, so.
Do the meetings have to be posted?
Yes.
As a negotiation stream?
Yeah, I don't know if that's a change from what it used to be or.
Cause there's not a law on, on the board. No, it's not a board meeting, it's just a negotiation meetings, but I can believe they have, the meetings have to be noticed.
No, and they're, and they're open meetings, I mean, strategy and executive sessions are permitted, but the actual meetings between the teachers are are in the board isn't open. Now, one of the interesting things is if one of y'all wanted to attend as a as a member of the public, then it would be a forum and then it would be a school board meeting.
Did you say law? I'm sorry, I can't.
Yes, if one of y'all were to attend as a member of the public, then we'd constitute a forum and we'd be a foul all along for not posting it, so y'all can't attend it, but it is an open meeting.
You can't attend?
You cannot unless we post it as such, or if the teachers wanted to, they could call for a vote right there, um, just because there were three of us in the room, so.
So board members can't attend?
Board members can, teachers.
Teachers and public can't attend?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
So my thought after this, um, and we really can't do anything until we get the numbers from the state, but what we really need to do and probably at the March board meeting is to go into executive sessions board and which we are legally up to, to come up with a strategy of what we wanna achieve. Um, spell out the priorities of what we wanna do and even, to me, even if we don't know the money at the time, the priorities should should still be there, you know, what we wanna do and that.
I I have a couple of questions, uh, just from my standpoint. One, has anybody asked for negotiations? Do the teachers wanna negotiate or do we wanna negotiate? Is that, that's not occurred yet, nobody's, okay. And then certainly at the board, we want to, we want to, okay, so we'll just leave it at that, let's let's.
I'm really having a hard time hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know, you need to take your mask away from your.
I'm so scared, I know, so.
Thank you.
He's got a beard.
Yeah. Start to feel funny, I'm so. Um, okay, yeah, that's why I was curious and I'm just trying not to run afoul of anything, that seminar had a bunch of legal information, but would it be possible, even on our own agendas, but, um, to have executive sessions built in so whatever it was, the time we needed to, otherwise we have, we have to post an executive session. We have to, so in order to legally do that, we have to tell people there's a chance that we.
And I think as long as negotiations are agenda, we've just put executive session.
Yeah, okay.
I won't be able to be at the next of the March meeting, so I won't be able to be in that executive session either. I mean, I start, um, working Wednesday evenings for tax season. So I can do it a different day, you guys can hold it without me.
Well, we can hold a different day, I mean, or we can even discuss, will they get a different day, um, to see if there's a day that works very great, so if you can, be in attendance.
Sure, I can do it actually the next Wednesday, it's spring break, so I don't have to do it, I can prepare enough, but. Otherwise, you can hold it, you know, otherwise you're welcome to hold it without me, I just, I can't sound as well.
Well, the only thing is we gotta have it before the fifteenth, so we can approve the email.
But no, I'm talking about the board meeting, just talking about the executive session.
Well, it would be.
At the end of the board meeting?
It would be during the board meeting.
Oh.
Is what it would act occur.
Could we post it separately and maybe do it like on a Tuesday?
Well, you can have the board meeting on Tuesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, but, sorry.
I mean, one, one, one day, one day.
But it'd be a Monday or a Thursday or Friday.
What day of the week works?
Might be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Would you guys have a problem if it was a different date?
Nope, I would love a Thursday.
You can't do Thursday?
No, Thursday would be ideal, yeah. Most of, most of the, my job takes me away from here on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. It's just been reckless, I've been in here as many times.
Is there an issue if we would have March eleventh on Thursday?
I don't have an issue, I think I agree.
Voice basketball, but we don't know what that schedule.
Is that, is that history?
That's history.
Yeah, but.
Is that the first day of it?
No.
The eleventh, that would Thursday is not the first.
No, um, cause I booked it, I think Monday even, the eighth.
What about the first day?
I think that Monday, that eighth, Twyla is the first, according to our school calendar, it's against the eighth Monday.
What about the first, I mean, it doesn't make a difference to me, but I I imagine some want to go to the game. What about the first Thursday, which we do for?
Does that give me?
I don't know how that works for Twyla, Mills.
Tight for me, but, um, I've, I could do my best. Since the Monday, since the March first is on a Monday, it takes like a two or three days, but I can get it done.
I don't want to take that one back.
That's okay.
I think they'll, they'll put that in to there, otherwise they've mentioned this earlier, but.
Well, I want you guys to do what you need to do, I I'll get my stuff done.
Well, and I can see that we would go into executive session at every board meeting until the contract's approved, so.
Yeah, just an update.
March eighth or April eighth is one of them, or April seventh?
Yeah, the seventh, well.
Is it? Oh, no, April fourteenth is the next one and I, I'll be fine, so it's just the March one that I'm gonna have an issue with, but.
That was March ten.
March ten, I can remember. I can also call it earlier if that's different.
March, March eighth on a Monday would work for you.
Well, I mean, it, it's just as difficult as.
So that won't hurt you, for sure we would pay that pay anyway.
I mean, I I can juggle my schedule.
It conflicts with the boys' district tournament.
Oh, okay.
We might just have to, without, without.
I mean, you're not telling me.
Okay, we'll just leave it for March down the.
Oh, we can.
Cause that's why I actually asked for it.
There was an item that didn't get put on the new business, I mean, at this point, do you guys wanna add it or not add it?
I'm like, I don't know.
Well, I asked for a copy of the contract, I'm sorry if you asked at the beginning of the meeting if there was anything else to be added to the agenda, I did, cause I did hear you ask, my apologies, because if you did.
I was glad I had my mask on.
Maybe, yeah, and I mean, I'm a little old and dense, so that could be the other half of the problem, but, um, so I do apologize. But I asked, um, Mr. Girding to get a copy of the extracurricular activity contracts together, because I was just kind of interested to see, um, how many people didn't end up getting paid this year due to COVID. Um, and as I'm looking through these, I guess, I didn't see a whole lot, which is is nice. Um, and I'll share these, pass these down too, so you guys can look at them, but I guess I'm a little curious as to. So I see that there was one here where a cheer coach did not get paid because we didn't have cheer. No football cheer, no junior high basketball cheer. But then there was one for, this one right here. Activity band and choir where we paid forty-eight fifty-five.
That's what it says, um, I didn't look at the contracts.
But we didn't have any extra activities for band or choir this year, so I'm just confused why we would pay that if we're not paying cheer.
That band and choir, um, is also pet band and. We had a pet band last home game and we're gonna have pet band on on the last home game of boys and they do go to All-State, um, festival coming up in a couple of weeks, so their stuff is still coming.
Could some of this COVID money be used to pay for these contracts?
No. No, cause it's already budgeted from last year.
So we're gonna pay Cam forty-eight fifty-five for doing two pet bands?
Well, and he also did all the, he also got all the school songs ready for all the football games, all the basketball games, he played them, he got everything ready, so yes.
Okay, did we offer that same opportunity to the cheer coach?
I'm not sure what. Really, that should have been a Mr. Krueger question, because he's athletic director. What I know is that they didn't have cheerleaders for football and so we did give her a different contract for spirit advisor, because that's what they agreed on. That you could, you should see a spirit.
Yeah.
But in there, so that's what they agreed on instead, cause they didn't have football cheerleaders for football, the way I understand it.
I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around why we would pay somebody a full salary for doing minimal work for their contract, um. As far as eating the school songs and stuff, like, couldn't we maybe have saved a little bit of money and given the task to somebody else, like, don't we have an administrator on duty at every game?
Yes, we do, yeah.
Wouldn't it have made sense to save some money into that? I'm just trying to to think, but we're, we're not in a very good financial situation and I guess I just, I'm a little bit concerned with me. That's five thousand dollars that.
Is that the only contract not paid for extracurricular, is cheer, or is there other ones?
Just cheer, that I saw anyways. Which is good, I mean, I'm glad to see that everybody's getting an opportunity to to coach, because I know we didn't have, you know, baseball or track last year, which was sad, thankfully, we're still back there.
I'll just, I'll address Mr. Bell here a little bit, just cause I'm here for every girls' basketball game and he he was here doing the music for everything, whether, you know, he's instructing the band or up there running the music, I mean, he was there, he was putting his time in. Um, now, when we did these contracts, we put in there that if the sport did not occur, it wouldn't get paid, well.
Due to COVID, right?
We didn't say anything that if it half occurred or whatever, um. I mean, I see him there every night when we have home games, so he's putting his time.
Okay, so if Tiffany would have just showed up for for football, like, when we didn't have cheer, she would have got paid, she's putting in her time.
But she didn't, she didn't do anything.
But but did we offer, did we afford her the same opportunity? Exactly, that's, that's my question.
Any cheer, we had no cheer in the whole.
Yeah, whole games for.
No, we do for girls' and boys' basketball.
But her original contract just said cheer coach, is that right?
You can look at the contract, there's football cheer coach, there's basketball cheer coach, there's junior high cheer coach. Um, I'm not sure what they talked about, Mr. Krueger and, um, Ms. Madison. They came up with the decision of having her as a cheer advisor.
So was this agreement also made between Mr. Krueger and Mr. Volatier?
You would have to ask Mr. Krueger that, but I don't know what was. You would have to ask Mr. Kruger that, but I don't know what was talked about in those conversations.
I, I don't have an issue with paying Mr. Bell here, I just am a little nervous about taking one contract, splitting it up and saying, oh, you did part of your job. So we're gonna, you know, split that contract into something else and not do that for anyone else.
I don't, I don't know what you say that he's not doing stuff.
No, I didn't think he was.
Like, like Mr., um, I really said that he was at every single game getting everything ready. So he was trying to do his job every single game. And pet band, once he was said, hey, you can do it because of COVID. He, he got his band ready and they played. And that's just, he has a couple of festivals coming up, he's preparing those students. And that's part of that contract, he is bringing those students to festivals. So he, he is doing some of his contracts, if not all of it, if not all of it, because he, he was at every game.
But he didn't do pet band, that's part of his contract, was it in his contract to do the music?
That's, the only thing that contract says is what you read, and that's, there's no duties on the contract.
Right, it's very basic.
I just speak.
What the negotiations are gonna be what the athletic director of the school placed on, if there is nothing in these contracts. It just, for example, it says position of head varsity coach, the name, the school year, the salary.
I just think it's a lot of money to, um, dish out, given our financial situation, when we could have had somebody else who's always here doing it.
And there was, there was one other contract that wasn't paid either. For fifth and sixth grade basketball, there's two coaches, seventh and eighth graders, two coaches. However, if, if I told, um, Mr. Kruger, if we do not have a certain amount of participants, we're not gonna have two coaches, which is, we cannot afford it. So girls' junior high basketball, they only have one coach because of the participants, so we did not offer another contract. However, if they had over, I, I did say like fifteen or sixteen participants, we would have two coaches. But, um, junior high girls' basketball, we did not, so we did not pick that contract out.
Well, I just, I, it got, got me thinking when I was looking at it, because I know I have a daughter that is in band and she hasn't done pet band at all once this year. Not even football, which is an outside sport. Um, and she hasn't been to any festivals or anything yet, we're already, you know, mid-February. So I just, uh, I just hope that we're, you know, being fair with everybody as far as the contracts go.
So Stephanie, what would you like to see in the future? Because that, like Dawson said, the contract's so generic. Um, I don't know if you want the next year's athletic director to have the duties on the contract, so we know. I'm, I'm not sure what's your.
Well, yeah, I think, because I didn't, I guess, has he, Mr. Bell's here, you're here, I'll just ask you. Have you always been the one to set up the, the music and the, the national anthem and all of that? Or have you been here to do pet band?
Am I required to say four names?
Are you required to?
Yeah.
No?
No, I have not been the person to do it, I've played it every time we're here. At the beginning of the year, the state did not allow for pet band. So that first football game, we would have had it, but we were not allowed to have. I was not allowed to have any of this until this first basketball game, which was senior night. That was the greatest that I could possibly have played up there. It was decided that nothing would carry this schedule, you know, it changed.
Okay, thank you, and I remember us discussing too, when we talked about paying for extracurricular activity contracts. That if, the question was asked, if we didn't pay or if we didn't play a sport due to COVID, would that person get paid? And the answer was no. So I just wanted to bring it up, thank you.
So did we play football this year?
Yes.
So the head football coach got paid, but not the cheer coach because there was no cheer, correct?
I don't understand why they split her contract up, I'm not, I'm not, that's what I guess I'm not understanding. I just don't like, I don't like doing something for one person and not for the other, so that's what I don't like. I, I have, I think he has done as much as he could and for his contract, I just don't like that he split up one contract. If I needed part of it.
My, my question, I could, I haven't looked at them, so for cheering, is it for all sports or does each sport have contracts?
Sports got a separate contract and maybe what we need to do in the future.
What do we split it up then?
Right, and that's what I think we're on a consensus here. Instead of splitting up that contract, it just needs to say cheer coach and a combined value and not per sport. Because she puts in time and effort regardless if the sport is being played or not with those cheerleaders who are still considered athletes.
But it could happen where you have a, maybe that person doesn't want to do every sport.
Okay, so did the spirit advisor become a result of not doing junior high basketball? Is it like a replacement?
It's a replacement of the football and, um, the football cheerleading.
Cheer coaches here if you want, have any questions.
Can I just add something first? Each contract that Ms. Madison has for cheer coaching is on a salary schedule, so they're not all straight across the board, the same amount. It goes by the number of years you have and then it's based on the index of the base salary. So she gets paid less money for junior high coaching than she would varsity basketball coaching. So it would be almost impossible to combine them in one.
I also want to bring up that we paid the junior high girls' basketball coach in full and they only had a few games this year. So we did pay her in full for the duties that she did and it wasn't a full season. So it's pretty much the same thing.
Do they still have those full practices though after school? Or was that, was that limited to?
Everything was limited, um, we were, we were out of school for a couple of weeks. And then the governor shut us down for a couple of weeks, so, um, she didn't have all the practices that she would have in a full season.
I think that's the issue though, is that you create from the call, set her call contract and in the other case, the cheer coach who did it. That's, I think that's the issue.
Well, so the only way you can take care of this is when we get into negotiations and do the contracts. So if you want to get more specific and address that, we have to do that in the new contracts. The contracts we have now only stated if the sport did not occur, you don't get paid. So if it was half a sport or a fourth of it, they get paid, it wasn't addressed.
So.
You can ask Mrs. Ma, Ms. Madison what they talked about, because I was not in that meeting.
Did you do any of the football cheering or junior high basketball cheering? Okay, so this year was a little different. I, for football, I did not have cheerleaders because a lot of them wanted to try volleyball, which I totally support whatever they choose to do. Um, but I still did all the posters, locker tags, senior nights, spirit weeks, homecoming, everything. So Mr. Kruger and I agreed on spirit advisor pay, because I felt like my time shouldn't be just worth nothing. But since I didn't have cheerleaders, I also should not be getting that paid for football. Um, and then I do have varsity cheerleaders that this year we opted not to travel with COVID. But instead, we decided to cheer all home games for boys and girls, which equals the same number of games. And we felt like it was a way to support and include everybody. And then I don't have, I didn't have any seventh and eighth graders that were interested in cheering and I just didn't even push it this year. When fifth and sixth grade basketball rolls around, I usually do that too. And I have already had fifth and sixth graders asking when practice will start because I know they're interested in it. So when that time comes, we'll see if we're still able to play and if they choose to put me in that position, which I told anyone else is gonna be fine. But, um, things were different this year with my contract, um, so.
So they didn't have cheerleaders go up for football? So that contract, how could we pay that contract? They didn't have cheerleaders for the junior high, so how could we pay that contract?
Okay.
And then I'm glad that you're doing this script, you made posters and I'm glad that you guys worked that out, because you do a lot of work there.
Yeah, it sounds like that you were faced with a report that you did do, is that right? Okay.
And that makes sense.
And I think the reason that junior high one is in there is because I always have had junior high cheerleaders. But then last year I had eight, you know, seven, eighth graders who are now freshmen. You know, so now they cheer for varsity, well then I didn't have any seventh graders that cheered last year. So I just didn't have anybody that wanted to move up in the junior high age, which is okay. Um, so I think that's why it looks like it's just an old contract, because it has always been fulfilled, it just wasn't this year.
So when we're talking about the contracts, Mr. Bell here, do you, do you feel it would be beneficial for your contract to have more specifics lined out of what the requirements are? Or do you not think that's necessary, in your opinion? Like, i- is it more required just for the band and if, if there is no band, is playing music then fall under that for you?
I, I think when they renegotiated these contracts, we split between activities choir, activities music, or activities band, when they combined. When they negotiated that, we had all the meetings that I do and that was what's after I do combining that and changing base scale for it. So I think they're in there, this year was just weird. I would have been doing every of those twenty-eight net bands, all five, six, that's what we go to, five, six weekends and mix up all those things. So I don't think I used in there.
Top pay, okay, I just wanted to hear your opinion.
And I think right now we're kind of getting into negotiation topics that we need to like. If, if you want to change, do anything, when we go into executive session, that's when we need to talk about.
No, absolutely, I just wanted to get his opinion since we were, you know, talking, kind of putting him on the spot there for a minute, I just wanted to hear his opinion.
And, and thank you, because I just, I, I really was interested to see the numbers for our contracts. And I'm, again, really glad to see that we were able to pay as many people this year as, as we were, so.
Okay, our next board meeting is, um, can I, I did notice, um, calendar B one, we're, we're going so fast, so I was gonna try to get another calendar. February twenty, twenty-fourth should be blue and not the fourteenth. So February twenty-first is President's Day and that's the CRAA day off, um, professional development meeting, not the fourteenth. So that should be done, just one, I wanted to let you know, that February twenty-first is the day off for our professional development.
Yeah, I don't think that changes.
It was just one week down, um, it's on A and B, but for some reason it's not on D.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, did you already call?
Yeah, I had to set up.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.